I move to open the public hearing for the 2017 tax levy.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
And Mr. Drake?
Yes.
I guess seven yes, motion carries.
Okay, Carol, I think you are up.
Thank you. By law, school districts request a specific amount of property tax money. The amount of property tax money a school district can collect is limited or capped by the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, which is referred to as PTEL. This law only allows school districts to collect the lower of CPI or 5% more in taxes than they did the prior year. Last year's CPI was 2.1%. This means that the property taxes to Warren Township High School can only increase 2.1% plus an amount for new construction that goes on the tax rolls. We cannot by law receive $1 more. Many of you saw a notice in the paper of a public hearing and the estimated tax increase of 18.56%. This notice is what's called a balloon levy. A balloon levy is a term that is used to describe a practice of requesting more money than we can legally receive. The practice is used because we do not know how much our equalized assessed value is, nor do we know our new construction at this time. Since the amount of tax increases is capped at the 2.1% Consumer Price Index and taxes from new construction, the taxpayers' taxes will not increase overall by the amount of the notice published in the newspaper. The notice is merely a protection so the school will not collect less than the law allows. The law ensures that the taxpayers will not pay a school district not $1 more than the lesser of CPI or 5%. So that's what the law is. That's why we balloon levy. I know I've talked to a couple taxpayers. It's a very confusing notice that we put in the paper. It's required by a very old law, and so it's very common for us to get calls and to get questions about this. But our limit, like I said, is 2.1% more than last year, plus any new construction that comes on the tax rolls.
What's the estimate for new construction right now?
The estimate is...
It's like 10?
It's $8.5 million in new construction. So with new construction, it adds about four tenths more to the tax rolls. So existing taxpayers, on average, would pay 2.1% more, and we would receive another four tenths from the new construction going on the tax rolls.
The new construction doesn't cost the existing taxpayers anything.
No.
It's paid by the new people that own the new construction.
Anything else, Carol?
No. No, unless the board has any questions.
Okay. Then we'll move down to public comment. And I did see there was a number of four or five people that signed in. If you would come up to the microphone up there and state your name. We typically provide three minutes for public comment. I'd just remind you that this is your opportunity to provide some public comment. We're not going to engage necessarily in a back-and-forth conversation, but we'd like to hear what you have to say. So whoever would like to go first, please.
Good evening. You can hear me okay?
My name is Josephine Zaya. Recently moved into the area earlier this year. And in the three-minute timeframe that I have to share my thoughts with you, what I've passed out to the board here is a copy of an article from the Wall Street Journal about two weeks ago. It's entitled "Illinois Drives People Away." And it's basically talking about the net exodus of people from the state of Illinois, and that it has to do with a lot of the problems related to how our economy works and so forth. But one of the things that this article talks about is this is prior to the congressional action that is taking place right now, where the House and Senate bills of the U.S. Congress are going to restrict the maximum amount of itemization that you can do for state and local taxes. So this would be your state income taxes, your property taxes, et cetera, to no more than $10,000. The second page that I passed out to them is I am fortunate, or unfortunate, depending on how you want to look at it, I moved into the Daybreak Farms subdivision. And so I wanted you to all see that even though each entity that we talked to says, "Well, you know, we're only part of the pie, you know, and we have to look at our costs," I wanted you to see straight out what these 53 households are doing specific to the township of the high school. So we, in these 53 homes, provide over $260,000 to the high school, which is just under $5,000 a year in taxes for the high school. Okay? The average across the 53 homes is $26,000 total property taxes, and there are many in the $30,000 range. So what's happened is, some people may say, "Well, you know, that's fine because you must have money to do it." What you need to realize, at least the neighbors I've met, are most are retirees, small business people. They are not Warren Buffets. They are not entertainers. And many of them have experienced 30, 40, and 50% declines in their property value of what they paid. So in essence, we are now starting a debt spiral here, because you need a certain amount of money, the valuations of the houses are going down, and these people are just suffering. And it's very sad, because a lot of them are elderly, they're retired. And so my request would be, I understand you have costs you have to cover. If you could keep this as close to the inflation rate as possible, we would greatly appreciate it, and we want to support the efforts of the high school. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And the good news is, we are at the inflation rate. So that's what we get, by law, by state law. Right? Yep.
Anybody else? I know there was more than one name up there.
If you guys have a second or third of them sign in.
I'll make this very quick. Martha Barabee, 1711 Whispering Willow Court, also a resident of Daybreak Farms. I support what Josephine said and ask you to do your best to keep the budget as low as possible, to keep our taxes as low as possible. I would also ask for more information about public notices of meetings and explanation of the taxes to be posted on your Internet site. I went and did a search for the meeting and had a real difficult time finding one, and I don't subscribe to the paper, newspapers anymore. So, you know, the notice that you apparently put in the local newspaper didn't help me much. And I cede the rest of my time to other speakers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, good evening. My name's John Bartosz, and I live in the same subdivision as the previous two speakers. And a lot of what I intended to say has already been said. I just want to emphasize a little bit more about the debt spiral statement. Even small additions to our taxes are causing problems. I mean, this isn't just something we think is happening. We've actually spoken with realtors. In some cases, realtors don't even bring their clients into our neighborhoods, because they don't want to encourage them buying real estate that has levied such high taxes. Any increase in taxes just makes it harder for us to sell. Homes are on the market. It's not uncommon to see two to three years for some of the houses, or even longer. You know, we're paying them two to three years of additional taxes, in some cases $30,000 to $40,000 a year. So we're faced with the decision, do we try to sell early and lower our house price by $100,000 or $75,000 just to get the house sold? Then, in terms of you and me, we both lose. Because I'm losing the money, you're losing the tax base, and you're forced to make that up by raising the levies. And that's the debt spiral we've been talking about. One statement, I believe it was Mrs. Rogers made earlier, was that you want to make sure you're collecting everything you're able to collect. I'm going to suggest a novel idea. Don't. Lower the taxes. See what that does to the tax base. It improves our home value simply because we're able to sell them more easily. Our home values go up, your tax base goes up, your revenue goes up. If you look around the area, Waukegan's house prices are going up. We were at the meeting last night, because we technically reside in Waukegan. They've imposed a tax levy on us as well this year. They're actually getting hit harder in the city, because their values, their home values are going up. But I would suggest that lowering our tax rates would help overall bring in more revenue to the school district. And I'd ask that maybe you consider that in the future. Thanks.
You.
My name is Chuck Lakey, and I still live, I live in the Daybreak Farms subdivision, too. But unlike some of my previous speakers here, I've been there for 21 years. I feel very badly that this is the first time that I've ever been to a Warren Township School District meeting to talk about taxes. I've been to Waukegan for three, four, or five years in a row, and they're only a third of my taxes. And we've been able to try to talk to the alderman about what they are going to be able to do to try to leverage what's going on. But to say what John says, you know, I've had two neighbors or three neighbors within the last six months that have paid at one time $850,000 to $950,000 for their houses, and they've now sold for under $500, maybe $425,000, $435,000. So the values are going in half. They keep referring to some of the older retirees that are in the subdivision. Well, I turned 80 in April, and I haven't worked except out of my home since I was 72, but it's getting harder and harder. Okay? You just can't keep up with the taxes. When we first moved in there, when we first moved in there 20 years ago, a lot of things have changed in 20 years. This is exponential, and a lot of it has been the schools. The schools, the pensions, Woodland particularly, Warren Township in particular, right here tonight, they're 69% of my tax levy. And we just, like you say, every time there's a little bump, every time there's a 1% here, 2%, "Yeah, what the hell, it only come to be $1,000," it adds right to that base, and it's driving people out. We've, I've talked to more people in the last six months and two a year that have said, "You know what? It's time to move to South Carolina," or someplace like that. And we don't want to do that. We like where we're at. Our family is here. So again, I'm talking to you, not from the statistics that has been so well-prepared with my neighbors. This emotionally, it gets really, really bad, because we can't do anything about it. We're in the death spiral, as John says. We just really can't do anything about it, either pay for it or move the hell out. And that's what a lot of people are thinking about. So we appreciate anything that you can do to try to hold the cost down.
Yeah, everything's left-handed for me right now, and it's really a challenge, so I apologize. Okay. So all persons desiring to be heard have been given the opportunity to present written or oral testimony with respect to the 2017 tax levy.
Mr. Drake, you did receive one email, and I'm not sure if that would be considered written. Would you like to read it?
Yeah, I'd like to read. I can read it.
It needs to be read into the record.
Yes.
This is an email from Anthony Demeritchi, sent December 18, 2017. "Will there be additional times to address the board concerning the new tax levy? I just found out that the levy is expecting to be 15%. Crippling for many of our neighbors. Daybreak is already strapped with high taxes. So much so that homes cannot be sold in our area because of the high taxes. This would be another blow. High taxes in our area is a major issue." Exclamation point. So some of the very same sentiments that we're hearing. I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing for the 2017 tax levy, and then we're going to move into open session.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by jury, second by Munda. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes. Stand for pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes or alters to the agenda tonight?
I have none.
Okay. I move to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Drake, second by Walls. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Onto recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Drake.
Sounds like we have an all-stater in our presence.
We do have an all-stater in our midst, and we have a very special young man that we're going to recognize tonight. And to help us with a few words about Mica, we're going to have Coach McMillty come forward and give us a little introduction into how this award is recognized and a little bit about Mica.
I don't like speaking my loud enough.
Yeah.
Of course.
First of all, thank you, boys, for taking the time to recognize Mica. This year, as you can see, this fine young gentleman right here was selected to the Illinois High School Football Coaches Association All-State Team, the Chicago Tribune, Chicago Sun-Times All-State. He was also All-Area by the Daily Herald and Pioneer Press, and he was the Pioneer Press Player of the Year. This football season, we were 7-4 with a very, very young team. We set every passing record that we've ever had, and most of it was because of Mica. I always kind of tell the story of when I met him in 2014. I just had this job for, I don't know, a few hours, maybe it seemed like. Then I get a call from Coach Katzen Zero at Lake Forest College, and he says, "Hey, I got a kid that's coming in. He's a definite Division I kid." And I said, "Okay, yeah, I got that. I've heard before." So I comes up, and he's in a full suit, and he's about 170 pounds and 6'3", and he shakes my hand, and his hand goes up to here, and I'm like, "Holy cow." And I've watched him as he's went on and developed and everything else. And I can tell you, he came in with a lot of expectations and things like that. He got his first scholarship offer, going into his sophomore year in the University of Iowa, I believe it was the first one. Followed up right away by Northwestern. So he had a lot, a lot of pressure on him. In my years, I've been here for 11 years, I've coached football for nine of those years here. I've never seen an athlete as decorated as Mica handle himself as well as Mica has handled himself. Being All-State this year was no surprise. He had 12 touchdowns, was our leading receiver, was, obviously, everybody would see him when he was on the football field. It would be hard pressed to replace him, not only as an athlete, but as a person. I can't say enough really good things about him. Through all of his hard work, he's accepted a full scholarship to the University of Notre Dame, where he will be going in about a month, which is going to be hard on his parents, but it's going to be hard on me, too, because I'm used to seeing him every day, and I'm going to miss that. But I talk about a kid that represents our school district, our athletic program, our football program, our student body. There's not too many that are going to be athletically better than Mica Johnson. Well done, Mike.
Congratulations. Best of luck to you. Eric, did you get your picture?
I got it. Let's see. Very special recognition. So what we only, sometimes we have more than one Mica. Tonight, we were happy it was just you, so you can kind of have the spotlight to yourself. So congratulations and good luck.
Next item on the agenda is the reception of visitors. I didn't see anybody had signed up for the open session, but if there's anybody out there that would like to address the board, you're certainly welcome to do that. Anybody? Okay. Onto the president's report. Annual joint conference. So it's been, it's been, we've had a meeting in between since the joint conference. So I would just like to express, so it was my first time attending. I spent all day Friday in a leadership session to provide me some more of the tools here to act as president. I can't say enough about the quality of the training. We spent the afternoon, similar to what we were talking about earlier tonight in the safety, in the safety committee, we did scenario training. So they would run, you know, there's a lot of rules that I'm still learning about Open Meetings Act, and what you can say and what you can't say, and how to write an email, how not to write an email. And so we had an attorney come into this training and just started firing different scenarios, you know? Jamie said this, and Billy said this, and Lucy said this. Is that legal? Is it not legal? And we would kind of vote around the room. I think I got more right than I got wrong, maybe, but it was really, really good training. And then, as far as attending and kind of walking around the different booths, I picked up some stuff. I have to find it, Carol. I picked up some stuff on roof repair, just security stuff, bullying software. So I thought it was, I thought it was really good. And I'd like to hear from anybody else, I guess, that attended. I'd like to think that we could maybe just bring one or two things back into the way we run the board. I think there's some things we could do potentially to run, for me to run the meetings a little more efficiently with the idea of a consent agenda. I don't know if that's something we've ever done here. So...
Absolutely.
Yeah. Anybody else willing to share anything? I was, well, I was a first-timer. I think, Jonita, you were also a first-timer, so...
Yeah, and it was, it was eye-opening to see the number of people that were moving through the city that day. You know, I mean, there was a lot of activities going on, but just this one conference alone, it was great to be around a bunch of educators and people like ourselves.
Volunteers.
Yeah, a lot of volunteers. And it was, it was nice, a couple of the sessions that I went to were really talking about, like, school safety and talk about eye-opening. It just made me sit back and think for a second about, you know, understanding my entrance and exit points, and, you know, really just being more aware of what's going on and just, you know, raising that awareness, not, of course, not just in school, but also where I work. Right? So school safety was a huge piece.
I think that was a focus thing for a lot of the conference, about safety. The two I attended were, one was social media. As age, it's out there. We, so much information is back and forth. Trying to keep up with the presentation was given by a former police officer that kind of walked us through it, looking at different OGs and what they mean. It was kind of eye-opening. So how to get handle on some of that stuff? I don't know the technology, how fast it spreads, if we're ever going to get a complete handle on things, at least being knowledgeable and picking up key signs when we're seeing emails, we're seeing electronic communications going back and forth, some of those symbols and signs out there. We can just pick one or two off, something from happening here in Kansas or our boroughs or communities. The other one was really about our building. Like the safety, which we talked about, is really doing what we can to protect what we have, as, of course, in our students and their area of building. We bring masses together. It's an opportunity for, unfortunately, some big, nightly ill or angry individuals to take advantage of being a group. So doing things like making sure that doors are closed and locked, making sure that... Security. Doing the things that they're supposed to be doing, when they're supposed to be doing. We take those things for granted, that we think that they're happening, but we make sure that they're happening. Those aren't things that cost us anything. Those are things that we should already expect to be done on a regular basis.
One thing that heartens me most over the last few years that I've been going to the conference is that whatever ZIP code, you know, these volunteers throughout the state are from, I think they all have the best interest of the school district in which they are responsible for. And I think generally, I think we need to invest in our intellectual infrastructure in general, and that means investing in our students first and foremost, our teachers, and all the assets that the district has. You know, something that's near and dear to my heart, Mica and I conversed with our solar, potential solar contractor, and, you know, we need to look to the future, and we need to set that example. And I think that Warren Township High School is on the leading edge of doing those things. And I look forward to the progress that we're going to see over here in the next 12 to 24 months. So, thank you.
No surprises at the delegate. Certainly, everything was voted on, how...
Your recommendations.
The recommendations.
I left early. Hard to hear that. Thanks, everyone. Next, committee reports. Do we have the insurance committee?
Yeah, we did have an insurance committee meeting back on November the 28th. A couple of things were decided at that meeting. We affirmed up the fact that at least for the 1819 school year, we're going to remain with the Lakes Region co-op. We're going to continue to investigate what life might be like in terms of our insurance plan outside of that. But at least for next year, we're committed to staying put in the co-op. But immediately, the other thing that we asked our representatives to do was immediately after the holidays to start to work on going out to bid on our dental, to see if we can get some better rates in terms of our dental plan. And we're also most likely going to kick off a program January the 8th with our staff to try to make them aware of an MD Live program. It's a remote doctor visit, if you will, that builds in efficiency and builds in, to a degree, some convenience for staff in regards to visits online or over the phone. And there's also a cost savings in that. So we've been in kind of, board members on the committee have kind of been with that investigation of that tool for some time. So January 8th, we're going to try to promote that to our staff and hopefully get some use. And it's a wellness day here in terms of our staff institute, so it'll tie nicely to that message. Willie, you want to update on the Craigum Committee meeting?
Yes, sure. They met, or we met on December 12th, and we talked about the summer school offerings for this summer. So there wasn't too many changes. We had some new ones added, but Mr. Drake, I was thankful to have you presented all of the summer school package, which was...
The diversity committee meeting just a week ago on December the 12th. And for those of you that are there, please make sure you remind me if I forget something. I was going to start where we ended up, because it was exciting where we ended up, talking about potential retreat opportunities for our students, as well as our staff and community, and trying to really challenge ourselves in our beliefs and make sure that we have those hard discussions about where we're at in terms of really building an inclusive community, where we're looking out for the well-being of everybody. So that was really a good place to end up. Roger Moriano was working with us in terms of possibly setting up those trainings. So that's, we've got ourselves, it's kind of a deadline, I think we technically said February, so we've kind of wanted to hold ourselves committed to that and accountable to that. And that discussion kind of evolved from reviewing where we're at, where we've been with our training internally with our staff. And we've had some new members in our group, which was great, because they kind of had us kind of refocus on making sure that we're constantly challenging ourselves. We talked about the racial graffiti that happened earlier in the air and how we could still have done things better, but we were definitely better prepared than they were the last time this happened, because of the work that we had put in over the last year with our teachers specifically, and making sure that we had a better plan. And our staff had some information right off the bat, and were able to at least help the kids process that situation. So there's always room to grow, but there's no question that we had, because of the professional development that we had put in place, that our teachers were much more prepared and able and had enough information to really be able to help kids process that. What else was I forgetting about, Jonita?
I mean, I think that was...
the last time this happened because of the work that we had put in over the last year in, with our teachers specifically, and making sure that we had a better plan. And our staff had had some information right off the bat and were able to at least help the kids process that situation. So there's always room to grow, but there's no question that we had, because of the professional development that we had put in place, that our teachers were much more prepared and able and had enough information to really be able to help kids process that. What else was I forgetting about, Janita?
I mean, I think that was a good summary, you know? We did a lot of, of course, reflecting on where we've been over the past year since our, since the committee first started. And it's always nice to have new members, and so, of course, we'll always recruit new members, so anywhere from the community, wanna come and join us, please join us, we would always love to have.
Superintendent's report.
A couple, just a couple of things before we get to the treasurer's report. We did have one update, so I think what I'm gonna do, first off, we did have two FOIA's come in since our last board meeting. One from Hanson and Cleary regarding our special ed numbers and some of our special ed programs. One from Mr. and Mrs. Smoran regarding the number of FOIA requests that the district services. So that's two FOIA's that came in. And I know we wanted a promotional piece of information, so I don't forget Rico. Did you want to give a little promotion here on what's coming up shortly? I'm Kim, right?
This is the hackathon again?
Hackbedia.
Thank you. Well, Rico's gonna be handing out an informational sheet. About a year ago, we came to you with the concept of a hackathon for a high school. And at the time, when we described it, it was an innovation marathon for students. And we had a pretty good understanding of what it was gonna be like, probably not, I'd never done it. It was new. And so we ended up with over 130 students who came from approximately 12 different high schools, most of them from Warren, almost 50/50 boys and girls and students of all different backgrounds that were at the Oak Lane campus for 24 hours last January. The projects that they came up with were amazing. The kids have to come up with a problem statement on their own, and they spend the next 24 hours, 26 in this case, hacking, basically coming up with an idea or solution to a real-world problem. So we are planning on having the event again this year, January 27th, starting at 9:00 AM until Sunday, January 28th at 12:00 PM. It'll be at our Oak Lane campus again. Our students that are helping coordinate it this year are Elizabeth Carpenter and Jasmine Lopez and graduate Mustafa Ahmed. They wanted to be here, we actually wanted them to be here, telling you about the event, but they have finals to study for, so you get us instead. So, but we've been working with the kids for a long time and really trying to plan this event to make it a bigger and better event this year. We wanna thank everyone who came out to help last year and volunteer and look around, even if you had to stop by for a moment. We really wanna thank the board for our support and would love to see anyone from our board and also our community and staff anytime on Saturday or Sunday. You can stop by at any time if you wanna see the actual project, Sunday's the good time. If you just wanna see kids being very creative and innovative, just stop by anytime. I know last year, Mr. Wall stopped by for a bit, and I know Mr. Drake stopped by when he wasn't helping the kids build a robot.
It was a neat atmosphere. I mean, they were all running around and...
It really, it's hard to describe unless you've been there and seen it, but it's really just neat. The kids come up with their own idea on their own, and we're partnering with Major League Hacking again, which is the nationwide, almost, I think it's worldwide, hacking league. And one of the requirements for them is that it's a free event for students. So we are finalizing some very exciting and potentially well-known sponsorships that we'll probably be announcing hopefully in the next couple of days, but we're always looking for new ones. We have partnered with the Warren Foundation, and individual donations can also be made on the Devil Hack website, and that's D121.org/DevilHack. There's also a link on the main page for that. Lots of people volunteered in a number of capacities, but we're always looking for more. Anybody's welcome, like I said, to stop by. And Rico's got just a couple little other exciting tidbits about this year's event to share, so I'll turn that to him.
A little bit of good information. Warren's gonna get some recognition, the students, the planners, everyone involved. Kim and I got the idea of putting a proposal in with a team for the ICE conference, which is the Illinois Computer Educators Conference. It happens every year. About 4,000 attendees attend this event, administrators, teachers, educators, vendors, et cetera. And it happens, this year it's gonna be in Schaumburg. But we put in a proposal, so the Devil Hack, as we call it, Hack to the Future, will be the presentation at the Illinois Computer Educators. So we got, we rolled the dice, too, and we put in a proposal for ISTI, which is the International Society of Technology and Education Conference, which is the big dog. It's 20,000 plus, same people kind of outlined at ICE. Actually, it's happening in Chicago this year, so that's a bonus. We were, and our proposal, you know, Warren's proposal was selected out of 4,000 proposals. Less than 25% of the proposals entered, get accepted, so we're really excited about that. And in closing, if that wasn't enough, the, I don't, I don't wanna get her wrong, she is the ISTI Conference Program Director, reached out to Kim and I, and turns out they wanna have a similar type of event at ISTI. So sponsored by ISTI, so they asked if we would be interested in helping, sharing some of our kids our resources and stuff to do that event at ISTI. So we actually got a call with her tomorrow, so.
Very nice.
We'll see how that goes. And then, you know, and just when we thought everything couldn't get any better, we also got a reach out from the Chicago Public Schools. One of their reps is, they're in charge of marketing, science, and technology in STEM. She'd like to, you know, definitely at least visit and, you know, see if we can't help her out and see if we can't get something going in the CPS. So really exciting things for our event, the future of our event, and the kids. And again, it's a really great experience for the kids, we hope you could stop by.
Did the Daily Herald cover this last year?
Yes, they did.
I thought so.
Yes, they did. And I reached out, I reached out to Bob Sustenjar, but he's a new location now. He gave me the name of somebody.
Okay.
So we're getting, we're getting in contact with him. And I'm working with Tech and Learning Magazine to do an article in their, in their, you know, their media.
Because we did last year, we did bring in, the learning police came into the presentation, we had some individuals that work on the medical app that came in and did a small presentation for our students, too. So that was really well received by our kids, having these mini sessions. So we're also trying to reach out to some local businesses and even maybe some of the larger corporate businesses, if they wanna send anybody over, have an information booth, or even just do a small 15 to 16-minute session for kids that they can learn about how technology's used in their industry. And it's open-ended as to how they do that, but the kids found that to be really meaningful and in some cases, help generate ideas.
Right. And last year at this time, we had about 20 people registered, we're over 60. And so it's popular and it's gonna gain steam at the end here. Current American Legion's already trying to commit again like they did last year. So it's really a local, you know, event that's really sponsored by the mayor, was there last year, I think she'll be back. And of course, Adam Khan and, you know, Akon Semiconductors, they're in the midst of filing a lot of patents, so I'm sure they're a busy schedule, but they mentioned that they wanna swing by, too. So, so yes, anybody who's interested, don't hesitate. If anybody expresses interest in how they can help out, they can do it through the website or contact us when you go ahead of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also in the board packet, there's the normal monthly reports of our staffing and discipline and enrollment and attendance. And Carol, you got a treasurer's report?
We've got a, we improve each month our monthly treasurer's report and our monthly budget to actual comparisons. So in the narrative that I've given you, we've, we've expanded our list of monthly reports. The first report is, gives a prior year-to-date and a current year-to-date results through the end of November, but then it also gives you a monthly budget for last, a monthly actual and monthly budget for this year based on trend analysis to see how we're faring through the first few months of the year. So right now, if we did a projection at this point, our deficit would be about $600,000 less, and that's because of the additional state revenue that we've received primarily. We also take our monthly actuals and monthly budgets, and we forecast out to see how we're gonna look at the end of the year. And I think this has just been a great tool for us, because I've had to do this manually for many, many years, but we are showing, again, about $600,000 less than where we're gonna end, that we should end up at the end of the year from what we budgeted. So you also have a charting of fund balances by month, so you can see last year's fund balances and this year's. And by fund, we've generated variance analysis that will show you in more detail what our variances look by category. There is a feature where we can let the board actually expand those, those line item details, and so you can look deeper. So we'll try rolling that out in the, in the, in the future. So hope, this, this is where I would like to go with the monthly treasurer's reports from now on and get rid of most of our old format. We would still keep cash, investments, balance sheet, and fund balances manually. So I hope that is something that is interesting to the board and will hopefully at some time get a little bit more to talk about the nuts and bolts of it.
I'd just like to add a comment. So we had a number of comments tonight. We are, as a board, trying to be critically aware of where our finances are and where we can drive costs down without sacrificing the quality of the education that we're providing the kids, certainly without sacrificing safety. The, the reports that Carol's describing are things that we've had in the works for many months, trying to get a better handle on what's driving some of those expenses. So I don't know that it answers every question that we heard tonight, but it is something we're very, very aware of, and it's something we'll continue to, to drive and try to understand how to do what we do and certainly not waste the taxpayer money in the process, so. Thank you, Carol.
And our departmental report tonight is our foreign language department. I think Amy and Lena are here. Oh, Willie's gonna take the mic.
I was gonna introduce them, yes.
Oh, my.
We have Amy Mason, who is the Oak Lane Foreign Language Lead Teacher, and Lena Rangel, who is the Omen Foreign Language Lead Teacher. And they, you got the clicker? So they are gonna wow us, I believe.
They're good with technology.
Presentations have been ramping up every time, so.
Transportation.
Expectations are way up here right now.
I don't wanna say anything, but transportation brought gifts, that's all I'm saying.
People are creating movies.
Buenas noches, me llamo Lena Rangel, soy maestra aquí en el edificio de Omen, enseño los niveles uno y cuatro, esta mi compañera, la Lina, de Lina. Buenso, mesera y madame, me matado de mis hijos, su compa se habia pensado, ahora estoy, y jonesa me ha pensado, ame de, correr a la frente. And that's all the foreign language.
Sounded good. I have no idea.
The rest is in English, but this is how we start off day one, word one, in our level one classes. Our students come in knowing nothing, and we get them to the AP levels, all through using as much of our target language as we can, which is a major goal of our department, to promote language acquisition through constant use and exposure to the target languages.
As a whole, our department offers 25 different elective courses in French, German, and Spanish. We teach levels one through AP in all of the three languages that we offer, and we currently have 2,515 students currently enrolled in our courses, and we did the math, and it's about 60% of our current enrollment.
In the French program, we currently have 208 students in our college prep and honors classes. We do offer French I, French II in the college prep level, and we have several levels one through four, and the AP French and honors track. We had, last year in the spring, we had 21 students take the AP French exam at the end of their fourth year of French. Our average score was a 3.1, we had one student scoring five on her AP exam. Each year, students level one through four have the opportunity to take the national French exam. We usually have around 100 students who choose to do this, and we have a very strong performance year after year in this test. Last year, in 2017, 22 students earned gold, silver, and bronze medals. And we did have, again, one senior who was invited to apply for the annual world sense scholarship for, in all expense, summer study abroad at the University of London in Paris. We last year established the French National Honor Society for our students at the Omen campus. We have 25 current members this year. We have a very active French club program, and we offer our students some opportunities to host students each year in October when students from France visit. And then every two years, these students also have an opportunity to attend a home state program in our France in which they attend a language school in the morning, go to local businesses in the afternoon for a work study, and then spend evenings and weekends with friends. We also have a very strong German program with 178 students, 12 teachers, and we offer classes to German I and then our classes level II, III, and the AP or in our honors track. The students also have an AP exam. Last year, six students took this, our average score is 2.6. Students in the AP level also have the option of taking the national German exam. Last year, there were two students from Warren who were awarded bronze certificates. We have a German National Honor Society with currently enrolled 20 students, and also we have an active German club. And last spring, the German teacher paired up with the history department to offer students an opportunity to travel abroad in Germany.
For Spanish, we currently have 2,057 students enrolled. We have a total of 16 teachers, and we offer the college prep track and the honors track, one through four. Another of the courses that we offer are the AP Spanish Language and Culture and AP Spanish Literature and Culture. Aside from the regular, or the college prep, I'm sorry, in the honors track, we offer the Spanish for native speakers. We offer that in the college prep and honors. Our teachers at the Oak Lane campus work closely with the middle schools to assess the students and place the students accordingly to their skills in the honors or the college prep native speakers. Our honors native speakers, they go honors native speakers I, native speakers II, and then as juniors, they get the opportunity to take the AP language exam, and as seniors, the AP literature exam. Last year, we had 61 students take the AP language and culture exam. Our average was a 4.4. 31 of those scores were fives, so we are very proud of that. Out of the AP Spanish Literature and Culture, we had 15 students take the exam. Our average was a 3.8, and I believe, based on the data that we've collected, we've offered the AP literature course in the past four years, and we haven't had anything lower than a three. So we are very happy to say, to share this highlight with you. We have 70 students currently enrolled in the honors Spanish, Spanish National Honor Society. We also offer Spanish club, and we have the Vansah Future Latino Leaders. We have currently 130 active, current active members, and we are starting our chapter under the National Hispanic Institute. It's a leadership organization, and we currently have our board members working on this. So it's where the students attend the leadership conference and attend leadership opportunities during summer school, so that this will be our first year with this organization. Last spring, our students here at Omen traveled to Spain. In the spring, our, our level four teachers, two teachers, took around 30 students to Madrid, España.
In the three years that Nina and I have been the teachers for the Foreign Language Department, we have worked very hard to incorporate the national standards brought forth by the American Council of Teachers of Foreign Languages into our schools so that we have consistent national standards in our curriculum. This particular organization focuses on through these three modes of communication, of presentation, speaking, interpretive, and interpersonal, and that helps to highlight the skills that the students will develop through their speaking, listening, reading, and writing in the languages that they are studying. Along with the three modes of communication, ACTL also really stresses the idea of proficiency, what the students can do with the language rather than what they know about the language. It is a way for the students to use in, in active communication what they learn. And so in order to measure proficiency, ACTL uses different levels through which high school programs typically, the novice level, in which the focus is on words, through the intermediate level, in which the students develop the ability to carry on sentence communication. And we've been working to bring this language and ideas into the curriculum for our foreign language classes.
Something that we also worked on along with our department and the assistant leads is the foreign language philosophy. And we basically created this because we wanted to solidify our core beliefs as to what exactly we want our students to be able to do in our courses. I won't go through everything, but some of the things that I wanted to mention were, we want the students to be able to use the language, French, German, or Spanish. we want the students to be able to use the language, whether it's French, German, or Spanish, not only so that they can communicate inside of the school, but outside in the real world, in real-world situations, for just enjoyment and also for career purposes. So that is one of the goals that we have. We want them to be exposed to a variety of authentic materials and cultural, allow them to become cultural-aware, the different cultural situations that they can come across in the different countries that they study. So this is something that we're also very proud of, with the help of our department. Something else that we, kind of with administration's help, Willie, Chris, and Michelle, is the Seal of Bilinguism. Last year was our first year offering this to qualifying seniors. And it's basically students that demonstrate that they are proficient in not only English, and we do their proficiency, we check their proficiency in English based on their ACT or SAT scores. Once they qualify with the English, then we go ahead and allow them to take a test. It's a computer-based exam. We hold that, we held that last year in January here at Almond on a Saturday. We will be doing the same, the same this year. And it's basically, we're a test that will check all of their skills area, reading, listening, writing, and speaking. So students can take that test, or we will also take their AP exam if they score a four or a five. And then that, that way they demonstrate proficiency in the second language. They can take it in French, German, and then they have other languages. Last year, we did have students register for this exam, and we had a total of 66 students register and they took the exam. I'll go over the numbers in a moment, but we mainly had French and Spanish.
With the help of our two post-secondary counselors, Heather Atkins and Karen McGann, we reached out to some universities to ask them what were some of the benefits of students coming in to their colleges and universities with this state seal of bilingual literacy. And the responses were varied, coming back from the different universities and colleges. Some of them count the state seal of bilingual literacy as an admissions requirement for a high school-level foreign language class. Several of them responded that they would give college credit for foreign language classes if students have the state seal of bilingual literacy. And one interesting response from Northern Illinois, Northern Illinois University, was looking in the future as we are in the global economy and hiring advantages from students who are Northern Illinois graduates in positions where they do hire graduating students. They, they talk about the appeal of having a second and third language fluency that can be used as part of their job.
So as I mentioned earlier, last year was our first year offering the Seal of Bilinguality to our teachers. We have a total of 66, 66 students take the exam. Forty-three students were awarded the seal, and 37 in Spanish, six in French. And for this year, we actually, our number just, we just updated our number, Chris, and we have 72 students registered for this year. We will be giving that exam on January 20th, which is a Saturday here at Almond, Saturday morning.
And in addition to offering the students the opportunity to earn a state seal of bilingual literacy, this year we're also including the commendation level, which recognizes that students are on the pathway to bilingual literacy. Instead of having to achieve the score of intermediate-high, intermediate, they need to demonstrate intermediate-low proficiency in order to receive the state commendation for bilingual literacy. And based on our numbers last year, all of our students would have been least qualified for the commendation.
The commendation, just a recognition.
As we look forward, what we are going to do over the next several years in our process for our curriculum is basically, we are working on renewing and aligning our curriculum with a focus on proficiency. We understand that it is a big long-term process, and we are willing to undergo all those changes. We are focusing on our political alignment for Levels One through Four in both our College Prep and our Honors Track. We plan to incorporate, continue to incorporate the APL modes of communication and proficiency benchmarks with our students. And again, one of our main core beliefs is that we want to focus on what students can do with the language available in our department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I know. Don't, don't ask any other questions. But I know some more, but let's just move on. Next part, next item on the agenda under new business is the approval of the 2018 Summer School Program.
Hey, Nate.
I'm gonna put on the glasses now. Getting older.
Oh, aren't you?
Yeah, it's terrible. Thank you for having me tonight. I wanted to just highlight some things that are in your board packet. There is a memorandum that each one of you have received that highlights all the changes in, that are to be made for the 2018 Summer School Program. Again, it will be held at the Almond campus. This year, the sessions will begin on June 5th, and for the entire six-week session, they will end on July 12th. We have a couple of emergency dates in there. We will again be doing online registration. So for those of you that are new to the board, what we do is we open online registration. It's January 22nd. And then we have a bookstore where students, where students or parents can get online, and it's a pretty efficient, easy process for people to enroll in classes. There were several curricular changes. Because of the strategic plan, we wanted to add some courses. The departments have done a really good job of looking at some of these courses to add. We've added a few workshops. You'll notice that the Art Department is including a Potter's Wheel Workshop, kind of a fun class where students will have an opportunity to work with clay and work on their skills there that they will use later on as they go through the programs in ceramics. Spanish Review for Novice Learners. This used to be an online course, but what the Foreign Language Department recognized was that because it was online, students weren't completing it, and they didn't get as much help as they needed. So they decided to create a course where students, where it's teacher-led. So they have an opportunity to earn a half a credit, and they will also improve their skills. The Industrial Engineering Department, they are using Civil Architecture and Engineering. This is an honors-level course. This is a course that they don't offer during the regular school year, and it gives students in Project Lead the Way an extra opportunity to fulfill some of the courses that we just don't have space for during the regular school year. So they decided to open this up and then make it available to students to take over the summer. We did change one of the credits from Grammar and Linguistics. It used to be offered as an English credit. Now it is being, it'll reflect what is current in the curriculum guide. So it will just be a general educational active credit. And we did reduce some courses because of lack of interest. The dual-credit courses that we were working with CLC, that just didn't pan out. We didn't have a lot of interest from students. It was a pretty complicated process as well. College Essay Workshop was a course that we had proposed last year that the English classes are doing during their senior year. So it wasn't, it was seen as kind of a little bit redundant, so they don't need to do that. The Online Spanish Bridge Program, I mentioned that already, and then we are going to reduce driver's education. We're not going to offer it in the summer any longer because of staffing and the lack of interest generally from the students who are taking it in the summer. That's basically the changes that we've made for the summer school. If you have any questions, I know there's some new board members. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are the driver's education, do you guys offer it any other time, or summer was the only option?
No, it's during the regular school year.
Okay.
Well, we continue to review that because when we were, obviously, you know, we're trying to make sure we get some details on exactly what the logistics are in terms of the waiver out of that. We currently, I mean, just as a, an informational piece, we talked to one of the driver's instructor, private companies that are in the area that handle a lot of our kids. And in, over the course of the year, I think we, we handle 60 students internally in the course of one year, and they handle 600 of ours. I mean, the reason I say that is we're already a school district. That's not our heaviest provider of driver's education in the area. So our goal was that by, we still have the intention of going forth right now into next year, like we did this past year with driver's ed for those 60. But our deadline was kind of by spring break. Then at that point in time, if we, you know, those kids are all on a waiting list anyway. So at some point in time, if we decide not to teach driver's ed here, and obviously those 60 students would have to go somewhere else. But if we, we would make that decision by spring break to allow us a little time to work with those kids on their schedules. So we're still trying to work out some of the, the actual details on the rules related to that. One other piece that Nate brought up in terms of the dual-credit, we do still regularly meet with the High School Alliance. It's the CLC kind of districts, if you will, that send significant numbers of kids to CLC after they graduate. And with, it's interesting because the dual-credit piece is still something that's got to be on all of our, all of our priority lists. And it's kind of been on theirs, but they haven't figured out the magic answer to how to get it done yet. I know it's still a priority of theirs, and some of the districts, they thought it was a great idea to try the, the piece where, hey, if they offer some classes, will, will kids go there, right, to get it at CLC? It might be cool for them and get some dual-credit. And the only people that had success in trying to get this to go were actually schools that had it on their own campus. And so it was kind of, you know, it was kind of like, well, maybe we're thinking about this too much, right? Maybe the kids know right now that they'd rather come to Warren than go to CLC at the other schools as well. So we'll continue to work on that with that alliance group.
I think it's good that we put an honors class into summer school. I think that's really a great thing because that's one of the things people try to get more and more, you know, classes stuffed into their schedule. And the fact that we give, you know, students in these programs an opportunity to actually do that in the summer, I think is, is a good thing. I mean, you don't have to have a lot of them, but a few is a, is a good thing because they're, they're wanting them anyway, so I think it's a good thing.
Have any other classes that are only available in summer school, like the Civil Engineering?
No. Well, the workshop classes that we have, but those are non-credit-bearing.
Is the Almond in the, portion still high?
Yeah, there's, there are still students who are enrolling in that class, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business, approval of the transfer of monies in the Working Capital Cash Fund?
We have to vote on the summer school program.
Was there a motion in there? I'm sorry. I move to approve the 2018 School Summer Program as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Gonna be tough. See what Jane does.
That's it.
Motion?
Competition and everything.
Hate love tonight, so.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Mundt?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
And Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we're next order. Approval of the transfer of monies in the Working Capital Cash Fund.
We're asking the board to approve a temporary transfer of monies from the Working Cash Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund in the amount of $3 million, and the Transportation Fund in the amount of $2,300,000. This is a temporary transfer. It just helps us maintain positive fund balances, and it's a resolution we do each year. The copy of the resolution's attached for you.
Questions, anybody?
I move to approve the transfer of monies in the Working Cash Fund to the Operation and Maintenance Fund in the amount of $3 million, and to the Transportation Fund in the amount of $2,300,000.
Second.
Motion by Anderson, second by Wilson. Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Mundt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Item is the approval of the amended cafeteria plan, including a, I didn't understand this, a health flexible spending account and dependent care flex spending account?
Section 125 of the Internal Revenue Code provides for a cafeteria plan. A cafeteria plan allows...
That's not a cafeteria plan in the cafeteria.
All right.
Just called it cafeteria plan.
Didn't connect for me.
So what that does, that allows for us to offer medical premium deductions on a pre-tax basis. It also allows for a savings account called the flexible spending account, where so much money is put in for covering out-of-pocket costs. It allows for our employees to put money in a dependent care account to pay for child daycare, that's what they call it. So what we're doing is looking to change the flexible spending amount to the new IRS limit of $2,650 per year. So that is the only change to the plan.
I move that it be resolved at the, the form of amended cafeteria plan, including a health flexible spending account and dependent care flexible spending account effective January 1st, 2018. Presented to the meeting, presented to this meeting is hereby approved and adopted, and that an authorized representative of the employer is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver to the administrator of the plan one or more counterparts of the plan.
Second.
Motion by Anderson, second by Mundt. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Mundt?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Next item is the approval of the MD Life Program supplement to Warren's Blue Cross Blue Shield Insurance Plan.
I mentioned earlier, that's just a plan to allow those remote visits. And it's only from February 1st, at least initially through the end of June.
I move to approve the MD Life Program supplement to Warren's current Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO Insurance Plan effective February 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Drake, and second by Schultz. Mr. Mundt?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
And Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Item of the memo of standing for Oak Plain Flooring Placement?
As the board, I think, is aware, we received flood proceeds from our insurance company in the amount of $401,000 to replace the damaged fieldhouse floor at Oak Plain. Approximately 50,000 of that went to cleaning the interior of the building. So we have about $350,000 of proceeds to replace the flooring at the Oak Plain Field House and to pay for architectural fees and other costs associated with the project. So we received and negotiated a seven-and-a-half percent rate for architectural services, which is very typical in the range of architectural fees for DLA to bid the project, plan the project, monitor the project. And we're asking the board to approve that, and I have understanding.
I was gonna say, this is not, they have not selected what the replacement flooring is going to be yet, correct?
No, we have, we have invited flooring companies into look at the fieldhouse, but we have not selected anything yet.
Move to approve the memo of understanding with DLA Architect on Oak Plain Flooring Replacement Services.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Drake, second by Mundt. Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mundt?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Item is the disciplinary...
I move to approve the disciplinary recommendation and resolution on student 2018-03.
Second.
Motion by Anderson, second by Drake. Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mundt?
I will abstain. I will abstain as I am currently the principal for the Lake County Regional Safe School Program.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
I have six yes and one extension, motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the release and settlement agreement for student two thousand eighteen dash oh four. I move to approve the general release and settlement agreement for student two thousand eighteen dash oh four.
Second.
Pending legal. I move to approve the general release and settlement agreement for student two thousand eighteen dash oh four pending legal review.
Second.
Roll call. Thank you.
Motion by Drake and second by Conway. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
I will abstain as I am currently the present, the principal for the Lake County Regional Safe School Program.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Item on the agenda, hiring recommendations? I move to approve today, hiring recommendations ninety-eight to one twelve as posted?
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Drake, second by Schultz. Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Abstain.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
And Mr. Drake?
Yes.
I have six yes and one extension, motion carries.
Payment of the bills for December nineteenth?
Move to approve the payment of the bills on twelve nineteen, two thousand seventeen in the amount of four million, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Wallace, second by Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Of the minutes from November twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, I move to approve the regular meeting minutes and executive session meeting minutes of November twenty-first, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Drake and second by Munda. Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Abstain.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
And Mr. Drake?
I abstain, I was not there.
I have five yes and two extensions, motion carries.
Have some minutes from the approved special meeting minutes on December fourth, two thousand seventeen. I move to approve the special meeting minutes and executive session minutes of December fourth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Barb. Rope.
I should know better.
Motion by Drake and second by Conway. Mr. Schultz?
Dana was not there.
Mr. Munda?
Dana was absent.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Dana was absent.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Yes.
I have four yes and three extensions, motion carries.
Down to the one item under old business, resolution authorizing the final aggregate tax levy for two thousand seventeen.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing final aggregate tax levy for the year two thousand seventeen, which includes a certificate of tax levy and separate resolutions for Illinois Municipal Retirement, Social Security, Special Education, Leasing, and SEDOL IMRF by the Board of Education of Warren Township High School District Number one twenty-one, Lake County, State of Illinois.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Anderson and second by Munda. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
I have seven yes, motion carries.
Last item, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Motion by Drake and second by Munda. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Munda?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
Happy holidays! Happy holidays!